Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School Board Directors Meeting for October 17th. First thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is any public comments. Okay, hearing none. Our next thing on the agenda is our fifth graders, Mr. Robertson's class, sharing writing pieces and field trip photos. Welcome.
Yeah, so it is Mrs. Christofalini and Mr. Robertson's class, fifth grade, and they have community involvement projects that they're going to share tonight. So I welcome the students and families here this evening, so thank you for attending, and I'll let the teachers take it away.
Wonderful. So with Mr. Phillips mentioning the community involvement, I just want to give a great shout out to a few people. Jennifer Swope, she's an associate director for elementary outreach out of Massachusetts, and she's been wonderful. She's actually helped place a couple of Williams College students here at Powell. Fifth grade is fortunate to have Alexandra, Alexander Newton, from a psychology course, and she's helping out, and it's been working out great. Also in the third grade, Sarah Kelly's working with Mrs. Kircher's third grade student, so we want to thank them. And also Jennifer Swope has given us a couple of insights to local things that we just did. Two weeks ago, we went on a field trip to Hopkins Memorial Forest, and tonight you're going to see just some wonderful things that the students have done since that field trip, so especially across the curriculum, which is going to be great. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Jack Sherman to step up first. Thank you. And if you will stay right here, Jack, make sure you introduce yourself. Say hi, I'm Jack Sherman.
Hi, I'm Jack Sherman.
Nice and loud, okay?
Hi, I'm Jack Sherman. I'm going to read my report about field trips. All schools want field trips to be fun. Some schools made it so their field trips could be fun without leaving the classroom. I'm going to be comparing and contrasting virtual reality field trips and in real life field trips. In this, I will use the abbreviations VR for virtual reality and IRL for in real life. The thing that is fun for virtual reality field trips is you can explore a landmark or a place that you usually couldn't go to. In real life field trips, there are more tangible objects to have a hands-on experience. Also, you can see animals in real life field trips. You can hear the noises of the animal and the calls of the animals. On a field trip, most students like to be interactive. In virtual reality field trips, you can visibly see a location. In IRL field trips, you can see a landmark. Also, you are right next to a place. They both are the same because you can see a location. It has to be educational for students to go on the trip. In the VR field trips, you can look around and see the place. In the IRL field trip, a guide teaches you about the place and the creatures that inhabit the area. In both of them, they are educational for students. In conclusion, all field trips are good for students if they learn. Some are better in certain areas of learning.
Next up, we have Advit Guel. He's a new student to the district this year. Could you mind doing us a favor? If, I understand it's difficult with the fans going, if you want to make yourself a little bit closer, if you feel comfortable, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Advit Guel. I'm going to be talking about field trips. Field trips. We are learning about field trips. Do you know about VR and IRL field trips? VR stands for virtual reality and IRL stands for in real life. Here's some information about VR and IRL field trips. Have you ever wondered if why VR or IRL field trips are fun? VR allows users to see unique views of places like the Grand Canyon. But there's one problem, you have to wear goggles. Let's now hop into IRL field trips. IRL, in my opinion, are fun. Here's a few things I want to share with you about IRL field trips. To begin with, let's explore what IRL is. IRL uses no electronics and is immensely physical. You can explore, play, find stuff. If you're fortunate enough to stumble across an old fossil, you're lucky. Let's now focus to see if they're educational. Let's talk about VR first. To start you off, here's one of my opinions about VR field trips. VR is very educational because you can see many things you may never see. For example, you can see Taj Mahal in India, even if you're on the opposite side of the world. IRL will allow you to find a lot of creature. Last characteristic I would like to talk about is physical. Let's start off with VR. Personally, I don't think VR is better than IRL because you sit down and relax. But on the other hand, we have IRL, which in my opinion is physical because you venture out. For instance, in our last field trip, we traveled a couple of miles. After comparing and contrasting VR and IRL, I think IRL is better for all the physical activities, but VR would be better if you don't want to go outside and relax, but still want to see nature. Overall, they both have pros and cons.
My name is Brianna. I'll be reading to you about field trips. VR field trips are IRL field trips. You may know what VR, virtual reality, and IRL in real life is, but I'm going to compare both of those topics as field trips. To begin, are VR and IRL field trips entertaining? In my opinion, an IRL field trip is very entertaining because you get the opportunity to be hands-on and experience your surroundings more than VR. Secondly, VR field trips are not that entertaining and physical activity, but it does go within the category of experience. The reason I'm saying this is because in a VR field trip, you can witness more unique locations, such as the Grand Canyon, Yellowstone National Park, or any other enjoyable location. Following, are VR or IRL field trips educational? To the least, they both are educational, but they both have differences. In addition, VR won't regularly have an instructor to explain to the children of their surroundings or what topic the trip is based on. Meanwhile, in IRL, certainly, you will have an instructor or some sort of teacher. I don't think VR would be educational for older students, really, but younger students would definitely learn some new things. Lastly, are VR or IRL field trips physical? Hearing that question, you would already know that VR wouldn't be that physical, but there are some ways, such as if the VR trip requires movement in it to actually explore. So maybe a VR trip could be physical. Next, let's focus on IRL field trips. You will already know that this type of field trip is very physical because either way, you're going to move or do a type of activity while on the trip. After writing this piece, I think an IRL field trip is a little more reasonable. What do you think? Thank you for letting us continue this out.
And we're going to conclude with our writing pieces with Chloe Campbell, and followed by Christopher Wall with a lovely explanation of the table. Thanks.
My name is Chloe, and I'm going to be talking about VR field trips and IRL field trips. VR or IRL? I'm going to be honest, I did not know what IRL or VR meant, but then I learned that it meant in real life and virtual reality. I think they're both very cool, but I do think on a real, going on a real field trip is a little more fun than going on a field trip in real life. The reason I'd rather go on a field trip in real life instead of going on a field trip in VR is because IRL, you can have fun. For example, you can learn more in real life than in VR. Also, in real life, you can physically touch stuff and get dirty, but in VR, you cannot do that. But they both acquire a view, and either way, you can see nature. Another reason is usually you will get a tour. There may be something that could happen in real life that could not happen in VR. But either way, you can still observe stuff in real life and in VR. Now I'm going to talk about the physical activities involved. In real life, you can jump, sit, run, and walk. In VR, you still can do most things, but you won't really get to experience it, but it will be better if you do it in real life. So in conclusion, that's me comparing and contrasting field trips in real life and in VR.
Mr. Robertson, perhaps we should show the pictures first of our day at Hopkins Forest, and then Chris can conclude with some of our...
Lovely. Salt pan through some of those photos for you.
Wrap it up with some of the whole language things that we did.
Hi, my name is Chris Wall. Thank you for having me, and here are some facts about Hopkins Forest. Hopkins Forest is 2,600 acres of land. Hopkins Forest also opened in 1938. Hopkins Forest also used to be abandoned. Before Hopkins Forest was a forest, it used to be a giant farm. 1938 to 1968, Hopkins, 1935, Hopkins Forest was used for meteorology by the U.S. Forest Service. If you didn't know, meteorology is like studying the weather. Also, Hopkins Forest covers parts of Williamstown, Massachusetts, Palenque, Vermont, and Petersburg, New York. In Hopkins Forest, there are 36 species of mammals, including moose, deer, and beavers. There are also 128 species of birds in Hopkins Forest. The farming in that region reached its peak around 1830. Colonel Hopkins is the son of Mark Hopkins, the founder. Some of Hopkins Forest is located in the Taconic Hills. In Hopkins Forest, there are several miles of woods and topography. There are 14 non-species of amphibians in Hopkins Forest. Here's an acrostic poem for Hopkins Forest. H is for hike, O is for open spaces, P is for pretty leaves, K is for kid-friendly, I is I can't wait to return, N is for nature, S is for science, F is for fall fun, O is for observe insects, R is for a relaxing river, E is educational, S is salamanders, and T is for trees. Here is a, here is a thank you note we are going to send to Williams College from both classes of fifth grade for letting us come and interact. Here are some more stuff that my friend Tyler wrote down. He saw some frogs, stream, snake, mushrooms or fungi, forests, animal tracks, spiders, an abandoned house, and some salamanders. Also, my friends Evan Hunt and Avery Bellatiere saw snakes, snails, wolf spiders, roly-polies, click beetles, centipedes, double-stripped salamanders, wood frogs, slugs, woolly bears, birds, and some slug eggs. And here's a column, or facts about the water cycle. The water cycle is movement of water on the earth's surface. The precipitation of water happens when water, the precipitation of water happens when water in the form of rain, snow, sleet, hail, or any other form of water is falling from the sky. Evaporation is when a water substance breaks apart from its source into small molecules. The cause of this is that the sun heats it up and heats up the water and makes it evaporate. Condensation is where the water combines together in a cloud. Then, the water cycle begins again. Again, what we did at Hopkins Forest, there was a water cycle activity at Hopkins Forest. At this activity, there were commands for each place in the water cycle to go to another place. There was cloud, ground, mountain, an animal, ocean, and a river. The commands would show how water travels around the water cycle. A little more about Hopkins Forest. Hopkins Forest is a nature place. There are many activities that college kids chaperone. It was a great field trip. Here's some stuff that some people wrote of what they saw at Hopkins Forest. They saw spiders, logs, a nut, butterfly garden, garden, no, butterfly queen, cabin, sun, trees, snake, woolly bear, salamander, squirrel, frog, and pine cone. Thank you for letting me...
Okay, I want to thank both the fifth grade classes, Ms. Christofalini and Mr. Robertson, and it is the intention of this board to use our buses to continue doing these field trips for these children. So thank you, and thanks to the parents for being so helpful. Children, you did a great job.
Thank you. We are very proud of you. And teachers and parents and students that are here, you know how supportive our school board is with the field trips, and I am as well. We learned quite a bit tonight, guys, so thank you so much for attending and sharing with us. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Do you think it's him? Do you know him?
No. That's him.
Yes, we're ready for you, sir. Actually, you can pull a chair up. We probably won't hear you from way back there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the chance to speak with you. Would you like me to just dive in, or would you like to start with any particular questions or instructions for me?
Want to introduce us? I don't know if they know.
Sure enough. My name is Ralph Mima. I live in Brattleboro and work for Green Lantern. I cover the southern counties for Green Lantern Solar. We're based in Waterbury, and we've actually done one project in Powell already, a 500-kilowatt net metered solar array off of Deanview Road. That was a project I worked on, went into operation a couple of years ago. We are now proud to say that we're actually the largest solar developer in Vermont. We've only done projects in Vermont, though, and we've, at this point, done, we either have operating or in development about 40 megawatts of solar power in over 50 towns, and that's over, that's close to 70 different projects. We were founded in 2010 and have largely stayed within what's called net metering. There are other types of solar programs and so forth, but most of what we've done is net metering. We've kind of specialized in it, and we've also tended to build projects between about an acre and five acres in size. In other words, 150 to 500 kilowatts. And what we typically end up doing with those types of projects is working with a school, a hospital, a town, a waste district, a fire district, some kind of municipal entity, which is one of the stakeholders in a project like that. They do not have to own anything or invest in anything, but what they can do is buy what are called net metering credits at a discount. And typically, you know, what we're offering now tends to be about 90 cents on the dollar. So you're getting basically a 10% discount in buying net metering credits, which then get applied against your electric bill. So this has been really our area of focus for at least the past five or six years. We work with ski areas as well, a few manufacturing companies, colleges, you know, a variety of other types of net metering customers or off-takers, as we call them. And by the way, the array in north Powell there that we did, the net metering credits are actually purchased by Mount Snow, so it sort of gives you an idea of how this can work. We have a project underway right now on the landfill, which is kind of up to the right as you drive into the transfer station off of Maple Grove Road. It's the landfill that you can see that has vent pipes on top of it to release gases. Back in late June, we applied for a permit, a certificate of public good, to put a relatively small solar array, 150-kilowatt array, right up on the top of that landfill. And we actually have agreements with the town to do similar projects on the other landfill, which just looks like a field on the other side of the transfer station, and potentially also on the raised landfill that's down by the wastewater treatment facility. Those are much more complicated projects from a permitting standpoint, so we're at a much earlier stage. We're hoping, though, that within the next one to three months, we will get the permit to build the 150 KW array on your right as you go into the transfer station. And so what we're doing is looking around for net metering customers to be a part of that project. And by the way, what I didn't mention is that these sorts of projects are typically financed by a bank with bank debt and then with some sort of investor. A whole variety of different, both in and out-of-state investors are interested in those kinds of projects. That's why we can offer these with no upfront cost and no purchase to towns and schools and so forth. And I approached SVSU, oh, I guess about, must have been four or five months ago, maybe. Started out with, in a meeting with Jim Colkeen and with Renee Gordon, and then since then have been going out to the individual town, school, district boards to present the opportunity. I got numbers from SVSU about electric bills, electrical consumption, and so forth by the different elementary schools. And I've actually already been to the Bennington School District, Woodford, and Shaftesbury Boards. So you're the last, you're my last stop in terms of talking to the SVSU local boards, and I can share a few numbers with you about, you know, based on the analysis I did. But before I go any further, I've already said a lot. I thought I'd just stop and see if you have any questions or comments.
Do you have any questions?
Not yet.
No, I guess.
Okay. So looking at numbers, for this school's electrical consumption and electric bills over the past year, what I figured out is that it has an appetite for just under half of the net metering credits that the planned array on Maple Grove Road would produce. So there's room on that array for other off-takers. But the Powell School could certainly utilize credits from that array, and they would end up saving the school approximately $2,200 a year. And you know, that's about a, I think it's about a 12 or 13% reduction in the cost of the actual kilowatt-hours that that corresponds to in the billing. But the thing I want to emphasize is this, too. This whole net metering program has been in operation since the late 90s, and it's gone through a number of different changes. And if you were watching it and you were looking at how the rule got revised every couple of years by the Public Utility Commission and by the legislature, you'd see that the value of the incentives has gradually dropped. So if you were looking at this area three or four years ago, there might have been twice the savings. You know, we're doing the best we can with the rule as it currently is. But besides the savings, I just want you to also think about the fact that what it basically means is that 90% of the electricity that this school uses would be switched from the current source, which is just the grid as a whole, to a locally available renewable energy source that is not using any kind of fossil fuels. There's an awful lot of talk these days about Vermont's renewable energy goals, about climate change and so forth, and you would know that once you joined a net metering group, either centered around the Maple Grove Road array or a different array that we're developing, you would know that, you know, pretty much all the electricity that this school uses is being offset by a fairly local and renewable source. And you can do that without having to put panels up on the roof yourselves, buy them, operate them, maintain them. So it's a fairly, fairly simple solution to solving that problem. So I'll stop there. And the last thing I want to say, too, is just that the way that this actually happens is that the school or the district board signs what we call a net metering agreement. And that would commit the school to buying net metering credits at a specified discount for a 20-year period. There is language in our net metering agreement for dealing with situations where a school gets closed or merged. So you know, these things do happen, we know, and that is anticipated in the net metering agreement. But the agreement is the basis, and then as soon as the array was up and running, you'd start getting credits.
So do you have any questions? Have the other schools signed on?
Not yet.
Not yet.
They're still reviewing. Sent his proposal to the school district attorney, and they're evaluating what that proposal looks like, and we'll get advisory from them.
So we probably should wait until we hear the attorney?
Have you given a formal proposal to Renee for Powell, too?
Yes.
Yeah, so she does have...
There's actually just one blanket proposal to the supervisory unit. But what I've then drawn up for each of the districts is a draft net metering agreement with the specifics in the exhibits that come at the end of the document. You know, like, for example, I'm going back to the Bennington School District on November, I think it's 7th, 6th or 7th.
November 7th.
Yep. And so they've actually called a special meeting that's giving them time to look at the net metering agreement. Maybe they're going to, I don't know, do they have a separate attorney?
It's actually their regular board meeting, so they just...
Oh, it is?
Yeah, that's their regular monthly meeting, but they made it an agenda item, are going to make it an agenda.
Who is your attorney again?
Stitchel Page, Atlantic.
Okay, I don't know those folks. But we, I will say this, we have actually signed a lease with the town of Powell for...
We have actually signed a lease with the town of Pownell for the landfill cap. So when we get the permit, we should be able to move ahead pretty, pretty quickly and smoothly. And I can say, too, that, I mean, you're, I'm sure your attorneys have seen these agreements from other developers as well.
Yeah, they actually said that they've worked with you on some other projects.
Yeah, the names sound familiar.
Maybe not you.
Not me personally.
Not you personally, but your company.
Because they're up in, what, Burlington?
Burlington.
Burlington, yeah, okay, so they would know this. So it's a, it's a pretty standard legal arrangement, either from the landlord's standpoint, you know, the town, or from the off-taker's standpoint. We've, we've done dozens and dozens of these around the state, and there are a lot of lawyers now who are familiar with it.
And it's a twenty-year commitment, correct?
It's a twenty-year, and then there's usually an ability to extend it by, you know, in five-year increments if, after twenty years, the array should work for thirty-five or forty years. So if the, if the customer wants to continue, they can.
Is the credit price set for twenty years, or does it fluctuate?
It's, well, it's, part of it's set. The, the value of it.
Does it fluctuate based on the residential rate is?
Yeah.
Right.
The, the, the net, the value of a net metering credit is, is, it's, it's a combination of three different numbers. One number is what's called the REC adjuster, and I won't go into it. Another is called the siting adjuster, and those are both usually a couple cents. What the sit on is, is what's called the blended residential rate. And that's set by the Public Utility Commission every year, I guess. And it can go up and down. We've only seen it go up, but it could go down, too. And so the, the, the adjusters are locked in for ten years. After that, they float free. And we can't predict where the residential rate's gonna go. But one, you know, one way to see it is that no matter what happens, no matter what happens to the adjusters or the rate, you're always gonna be able to buy the net metering credits for, in, in this proposal, ninety cents on the dollar. So you're always gonna be getting value that goes against your electric bill, no matter what happens to the rates in the future.
What was the lifespan of that array? The, was it thirty-five to forty years?
We, we think it should operate for thirty-five to forty years.
What happened after that?
Well, we're obligated, both by our permit and by the lease with the town, to decommission it, pull it all out, and restore the site to its original condition. And that's gonna be pretty easy with a landfill, because with a landfill, we can't puncture the cap. So what we're using is big concrete ballast blocks that we just lay down in rows on, on the surface. So you would think after twenty-five, thirty years, some kind of, of tracked vehicle with like a, like a fork, forklift will come and simply pick those blocks up and remove them. And before that, you just have to basically unbolt the array, and most of it's scrap steel. But, but it's our, it's our responsibility. It's the responsibility of the operating company that's set up to own, operate and maintain that array to do that.
And the disposal of that, the scrap can be recycled, those do have to be recycled. What about the solar panels themselves? How are those recycled and handled?
Well, most, they're, they're mostly aluminum and glass. There's, there's not a whole lot else in them. There's a little bit of wiring and so forth, so they can be crushed up. And there are already companies now that are beginning to specialize in, in solar panel recycling.
That's a good question. Well, I don't think any of us are against saving money for the school or the taxpayers. I'm not sure what the next step would be to do.
Well, as you mentioned, it is all one agreement, but the, it's broken out by the different schools, so we can advise you, say, once we have an opinion from the attorney, then we can advise you at your next, at your, just, BSD is gonna be discussing again at their November meeting, we can have.
Put it on the agenda for us.
And we spoke with the attorney today, who's handling it for, out of Stitchel Page and Fletcher, and he said he will have it in time, along with the spreadsheet and all, with, by the, the BSD meeting, so.
Okay, so we'll put it, we can put it on air next agenda, then.
I was just gonna ask, in the contract, do we all have to agree, or can individual towns not agree?
Each district can opt in or opt out.
Okay.
It's completely up to you. And a, a net metering group usually consists of a bunch of different accounts.
Right.
Because MAU is gonna opt out, right? They're not.
I haven't spoken to them. I, I don't know. I'd like them to consider it.
Because they're in another, they're in another program, right? It's not a net metering program, but it's that off-peak power, I don't know what the correct term is, that, that they're in an arrangement with.
Yeah, it's a curtailment program. The thing is, well, we can talk about it separately.
Yeah, but I, I think that's why they're thinking they're gonna stay with that and maybe not do this, but nothing official.
Yeah, they could do both. Mount Snow does both.
You had stated that Pownell uses, would use slightly less than half of it.
That's right.
What happens if Bennington comes in first?
Well, that's a good question. In fact, Bennington, with, with three schools, could use seventy-five percent of it. And you wonder, you know, there, there's not room for both of them. So there are a couple of different solutions that have to do with the other arrays in, for example, Dover and Wilmington that we're also doing. We have quite a few projects in development around the state, and most of them are in, in Green Mountain Power Territory. And as long as they're in Green Mountain Power Territory, they can serve customers that are also in GMP territory. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we do on a sort of ongoing basis is to try to match up the available capacity with the demand. And we work with, you know, some of our off-takers are really, really tiny, even compared to here. You know, like the New England Youth Theater in Brattleboro. So what we would do is, we might, we might, and, and the net metering agreement is flexible. It doesn't lock a, an off-taker into one specific array. We might find, for example, that we could put Molly Stark and Monument and Pownell together to fill up the Pownell array. And then Bennington Elementary would, would go to a different array. But it wouldn't look any different on the electric bill. So we would, you know, we'd.
So you may have Pownell in two different ways?
Not Pownell, because Pownell, as, as far as I understand, one single meter.
I think it is, yeah.
And so being one meter, you can't split it up. But it's, you know, it's, it's about, I came up with forty-six percent of the array's capacity. So we would put Pownell, and, I mean, I think rightfully, Pownell ought to get first dibs, because it's your town, it's your municipal property. And then the, the rest, the other half, we would figure out how to, to fill up.
Yeah, that sounds, that makes sense. All right, well, thank you for explaining it to us, and I think what we'll do is, we'll wait until we hear from our attorney and put you on the agenda for, for our next.
Is there additional paperwork for this that we can look at?
Not at this time. Once we have it from the attorney, we should be able to put that in the pack.
Yeah, I'll look at it. Yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The paperwork would be the blanket proposal draft.
Which Renee does have.
Yeah, she's got all those. And then also some references and project lists of other work we've done.
Yep, so we could send you that out soon around later. We won't have to wait for you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Have a safe trip back.
Yeah, thanks. It wasn't snowing when it came over, but.
Say we make it a few flurries tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, action items. The treasurer's report for September is enclosed. Okay, you have a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion on the treasurer's report? Okay, hearing none. We'll move right down to the consent agenda.
We're all in favor of it.
Yes, sorry. Okay, the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made second. Any, any questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, policy. Five-one-eight-oh, tobacco prohibition, prohibition. This is to warn.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made in second. Is there any discussion on that? Fifty-one-eighty. Hearing none. All those in favor signify? Okay, we, we got it. Now we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Something I really want to discuss with you is along school safety. Both Shaftesbury and Bennington School Districts have asked us, the SU, to look into school resource officers as we enter the budget season and what that would cost a district. So we've contacted the Bennington County Sheriff's Department and what that would cost to put a school resource officer in a building. So I want you to think, well, that's something that you also want me to investigate for this school. I know Shaftesbury is interested at, at last month's Bennington, Bennington Board Meeting. So the commitment from the sheriff would be that if we made a commitment for a full-time school resource officer, then they would make a commitment to send an officer, or deputy sheriff, I guess would be the right term, right? To the, it's a forty-hour training to be a school resource officer. They would go to the national school resource officer training, and along with that, with the officer on site, that'd be here with a cruiser and all that. So that's, and the middle school has a school resource officer. Bennington Elementary uses Bennington Police for a detail officer, because they wanted a school resource officer, but we haven't been successful. Bennington has had it in their budget for two years, have a school resource officer. And, and the town also has to put money into their budget to match, because it's a, the, the officer only works during the school year in the school, and then puts a year-round position. So in the summer, the police department has to pay their salary. So it's a, it has to be in both budgets. But the town has been, you know, my understanding of the police department has been shorthanded, and you can't, you need someone to volunteer to go, that that wants to be a school resource officer, go through the training. So we haven't been successful in getting, in other than one, so that's why we've reached out to the sheriff's department, and also because of Shaftesbury's interest, because, you know, neither you nor Shaftesbury have a local police department. So as we enter budget season, if that's something that you think you may want to consider doing, we will have figures from the sheriff's department of what that, what that would cost, and if you want to. But it's, it's a philosophical discussion also about what you want in your school. Some people like school resource officers from a safety point of view. The sheriff also talked about, you've heard of, what was the, having a blanket, now the drug program that was.
Dare.
Dare, thank you. So that is now, there's a newer program called LEED, which is law enforcement officers against drugs, and it's a curriculum that those officers would be trained in, and that would be something that, so that, you know, the whole idea is to build relationships with students with that officer, so, and help hopefully negate any issues going on in the future and build up trust between them. So think about it, and, you know, you'll be hearing from, the principals are gonna be hearing from Renee soon about budget meetings. You might have already, or a budget plan, no, if you didn't receive it yet. So it's, we're starting. And, and that, I didn't wanna leave Pownell out, because it did come up at another meeting, so we are looking at what that cost would be for a school. You would be one officer, or Bennington would be looking at three.
Yeah, I guess we would, it's something we can take under advisement and talk about.
See what the cost is.
See what the cost is.
Think about it, yeah. I can tell, it's, it's approximately forty-eight thousand dollars is the cost for an officer for the year. That's the preliminary figure I have from the sheriff's department. So, you know, I don't have it written in the contract or anything like that, but you have, but that's what it is, which is a discount from what the hourly rate would, because, you know, one of the other things that we explored is, if you wanted a, a detail from the sheriff's department, the rate was gonna be like forty-two dollars an hour, so this breaks down to more like, say, thirty-eight dollars an hour. As I said, it comes with everything else I mentioned, there would be a cruiser here in your parking lot every day, and, which adds to visibility, hopefully adds to students' staff's safety.
Well, we're very fortunate to have two sheriffs right down the road.
Yes, you do.
And they do, they do, they do make some visits, and they bring the canine friends here, the, the kids really like that.
And I've seen the people slow down where one of them is parked down, start on.
I think it's up to the board and the principals, saying, you know, do you want that in your building? Do you feel there's a need? It's not something I.
Yeah, I think it's something we can talk about.
And Jim, you said it doesn't have to be a sheriff or a police officer? We could, if someone wanted to volunteer to do it, do the training, they could do it?
No, no, no. They wouldn't have police powers or anything like that, so, yeah. I mean, the high school has a security team, which are not police officers, that they do hire, and they, and they're paid on the salary scale, so they work closely with, like, the, the high school has a Bennington police officer on detail there during the days, where the middle school has a full-time SRO, school resource officer, and they also have a security team, which, you know, but, not, I don't want to use the term security guard, you know, they're, they're a security, and they work with the police, with, so that is not a, they are not licensed officers, so I mean, I, I, I wouldn't say you couldn't do that, you know, you could have a, a Dina Stewart's position.
Yeah, you could have somebody like an ex-constable.
Right, yeah.
You know, that used to be a constable that's gone through all the training.
Yeah.
And then when the town decides to go with the sheriff's department, it has become no longer an official.
Even if we, we didn't even know if we really needed.
The SRO is, is a specific training for, particularly on how to develop those relationships and what they're willing. It's not to stand around as a guard all day, but to actually be a, a member of the school community.
Thank you.
And I, I see you got Act Forty-Six on there, so I'll hang around to you. I got time before I get to the high school, I don't know what you want to talk about on that, so.
Okay, we'll do the principal's report.
Sure, I only have a couple items. Last month, I mentioned that probably this month, we would do our reporting out of our continuous improvement plan and goals for the year, but we're doing that in November due to the timeliness of the embargo release of the ESPEC data. So that's on the agenda for November. And we'll want to talk about the November meeting date, and that'll be in your report.
We'll do a general report at next week's SU meeting.
Since it's Thanksgiving Eve, that third Wednesday of November.
Yeah, that's, thank you very much. We have to, we have to look at that, and MAU has to look at that, saying, do you want to meet the one, say, night before Thanksgiving?
So the only other thing that I wanted to say, last Thursday evening, here at our school, we had a parent night on proficiency-based learning, and we had a pretty good turnout of about thirteen families, and that's pretty good to bring them back in the evening. Mr. Steinhoff was here and, as a board member and a parent, so thank you, Todd, for attending that. So it was a, it was a good evening to learn a little bit more about how we grade students and how we don't average out grades and how we look at students getting better and better as they keep trying to do things, and I think that's good for our kids. That was really basically it, so next month will be our longer meeting with, presentation with PowerPoints with Laura and myself.
So do we want to talk about it, November meeting day?
Yes, I didn't, I just put it down, but I didn't realize it's the LEED before Thanksgiving, and that's not gonna work.
Todd could cook us a turkey, and we could have.
Yeah, he could, huh? Well, what, what, I don't remember what we do in the past. We back it up a day, maybe, Tuesday?
Twentieth?
It's the board's pleasure.
Do we do it the Wednesday before?
Wednesday before?
Yep.
Yeah.
Wednesday before, I mean, I, not that you need me present, but we will, like, Laura will be doing a presentation at Shaftesbury that night, so as far as your presentation.
Shaftesbury's Thursday.
Oh, Shaftesbury's Thursday, they moved to Thursday directly. Yep.
She'd really be on her board.
Until someone complains their fire, fire training, it's the Thursdays. So you could go with Wednesday the fourteenth.
How's that sound, guys?
Works for me.
Did it work for you? All right, well, we'll plug that in.
See how collaboration works here? Todd reminds me, we have to do the date, and you remember the Thursdays.
Do we want to move it up to six for Ian, she's gotta like rush back?
No, 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 don't rush, don't change.
You sure?
Yep.
We can, or just come in late.
Yeah.
We don't care. Just put bells on so we hear you coming.
I just gotta keep it on the second beat.
Wednesday eleven-fourteen. What time you gonna go?
Five-thirty.
Okay.
My schedule never stays the same, so I can't.
Oh, it's hard to tell. Okay. But that's all right, so just come in when you can, we appreciate that.
I'll be here. Come any way, I'll be here.
Now, we put Act Forty-Six discussion on here because I wasn't sure if you heard anything.
Nothing.
I know there's.
It's till the thirtieth, remember?
There's a lot of towns doing their own thing and trying to not go against Act Forty-Six, but to show that there are problems with it, and we know that.
And we sent a follow-up letter after the board meeting that you and I attended against stating, you know, positions, and we sent that to the State Board itself, so, but no response, and...
At this point, yeah.
No.
Well, I think they have till sometime in November, right?
They're, I don't know the date of their November meetings. I mean, they have it till November 30th, but I'm sure...
You'll hear before.
By whatever that November meeting date, we're gonna know what their plan is.
Yeah, so at this point, our hands are tied, we have, we just, we're at their mercy, waiting to see what they're gonna tell us.
Yeah, I mean, one of the questions that I had for our attorney is, I'm concerned about the timing of all this. I mean, we're supposed, if this goes through, we're supposed to go live with this, you know, July 1, right?
Everybody has to be on the ballot, right?
Right, and that's my question to our attorney recently, was, this board stays active until then, and you have some people up for reelection and much, so what do we do with that? And then, have an election also for this new co-mingling board, or what is, what are the instructions that I need to hear? And one of the things that they said to me, like, well, this board may not necessarily go away on the 30th, this is what Dana Atwood said to me, because you still will have some unfinished business, like, your final audit won't be, you may not meet after the new board, or you might still be a board until everyone's term expires, because, or until the final audit, which wouldn't be then, till sometime next fall, would you get this year's audit report? And if this board as an entity still isn't functioning, you know, who receives that audit report? I think it just points out again how much is unknown about it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Very convoluted, and it gets more and more convoluted day by day.
And I know we're moving forward on your ball field issue to try and get that, right?
Yes, yeah, I just, yeah, I was gonna tell them. And then, the next, what I did was, I signed a paper yesterday, because the state, once again, because it's a, it's the school, and because we're giving it to the municipality, it has to be, I signed a paper, it has to be worn for 30 days, and so, and it was posted yesterday in three different places, and that way there, I don't think anybody's going to contest it, make any sense. But after that, then it should be free and clear, and it should be handed over to the town. The town was very pleased and accepting it.
And there'll be other issues, like, if this happens in November, and that's the direction it's going, there's gonna be other assets that school districts, yourself, it's gonna be looking at, what are we gonna do with this before a merge?
Right, and we haven't gone, because it wasn't the right time, but Angie and I are gonna approach the select board as far as the buses are concerned, do, I talked to Joel, told him, asked him when he, we were gonna sell the other three, and we wanna keep two for the sake of, like, tonight.
Field trips.
Field trips. And briefly, the town was asked, the select board, and it sounded like they were interested in taking them for the reason that we wanna use them for the, so I called today to get information on just how much are they, are they talking, because when we go to the selectmen, we need to give them a figure. When you take our buses, this is what it's gonna cost. So, basically, gonna switch from the school to the town, and there's only two of them, so it won't be all five. So, I'm working on getting that information, and then, when it looks like it's time to go over, I'll call you, and we can take that information to the selectmen.
And then, the town would have, and then they would fill the school, and we would pay for the maintenance.
She's working on that, to get it down.
So, the town would maintain the buses?
They would maintain them, yeah. I asked for all that insurance, maintenance, gas.
So, they'd be compounding like their highway fleet, highway bond fees, or something like that?
Yes, and they'll probably be stored, well, the two would still be stored here, but, so that, I'm working on the bus, the bus transfer, but the land, the ball field looks like it's going through. It's just legalities through the state, because we are, the school, dealing with the municipality.
You know, we've been looking at issues at central office, that if this happens, what's the impact, particularly unemployment contracts, and we'll take, do we have to do impact bargaining, like, your maintenance, custodial workers here are unionized, they aren't in Bennington, they aren't in Shaftesbury, right? So, that is an issue. What happens to, you know, the teachers all have one unified contract, but they don't have a unified seniority list that is by school district. That's gonna have to be impact bargaining.
See?
And those are just the obvious ones that we're starting to compile.
The state has no clue.
A list of how, what this will impact, you know.
It's gonna be major in that.
But we're, you know, we're beginning to...
Yeah, feel it.
It's kinda, it's, well, it's, you know, it's on, like, everybody's agenda, it's on everybody's mind, that's why they say, we're just kinda like waiting for that shoe to drop, and, all right, we gotta do it.
Yep, and we either dance, or, you know, something else.
Sydney will dance.
I'm from the government, I'm here to help you.
Yeah.
You are, John, are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Sydney, so I just wanna be clear, the ball field is going to the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the town said that they would accept it, and with the stipulation that it stays a ball field for recreation for the children, recreation for the children of the town of Pownell.
So, it'd be like a deed restriction on, a restriction on the deed, or something that stipulates that?
Yes.
So, could it be like sold to build something out?
Yeah, no, we don't want that.
Right, on the ones at the racetrack, right? They use, on the right-hand side?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
That's the town, the town owns that.
Okay.
We own the one in North Pownell, because the North Pownell school was on it.
Right, right.
That's why we own it.
Who owns the ball field down by the racetrack?
I just asked her that question.
I think the town does.
The town owns it?
Yeah, I do believe, I'm not sure.
I can't hear it, it's near, it's...
Oh, okay, oh, good, so if I wanna talk about you, I can, that'll be, all right.